Yeah, ready? All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
We call the Liberty County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Mr. Brown has immediately been properly advertised.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. We're on Facebook Live. We got an alternate operator up there. His mentor is not very far away, so...
It's good to train some people who can be trained.
Yeah. Hello to you all out there who received the livestream. Happy New Year to you all. Happy New Year, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Good to see everyone. I will go ahead and say that Commissioner Jones asked to be excused because of work responsibilities. He won't be here. I'm assuming everybody else... Maybe Commissioner Fraser will come in just a little shortly. I don't see anyone from the Ministerial Alliance here today, so...
He called me last night, said he was gonna send somebody.
Did he? All right. If I may, then I'll ask our dear brother, Mr. Mosley, if he'll come to lead us in our prayer. Let's stand for our prayer and pledge allegiance.
Let us pray. Gracious and kind Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for allowing us to see a new year that our eyes have never behold. We pray now, Father God, that you would give this deliberate body, Father God, the wisdom and the knowledge they need to transact the business of this community. We pray, Father God, that we can move forward with projects that you will give us the wisdom that we need to transact it. We thank you for these individuals who give their time and their talents to make Liberty County a better place. And, Father God, we'd be remiss if we didn't pray for those who are going through the COVID crisis, those who are suffering. We pray that you would have compassion and mercy upon them. This we thank you for, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, the agenda calls for the approval of the minutes for the month of December.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I would make a motion we approve the minutes from December meeting.
Motion in second. We approve the December minutes. Any further discussion on that? If not, let it... All those in favor, let them show hands. All right, the minutes are approved for December. Right along, LCPC will come now and present to us. Mr. Rickerson is here today with us.
Good evening, Chairman Lovett, members of the Commission.
Good evening, sir.
I've got a couple of requests for you this evening. The first one is a conditional use request. This has been submitted by Coastal Solar on behalf of the owner, Mr. Jeffrey Hildebrand. They want to place a small ground-mounted solar energy system at their home at 224 Hager Lane. This is way out off of Fort Morris Road in a very rural agriculturally-zoned area. A conditional use permit, as you are aware, is required for all ground-mounted solar systems in Liberty County, regardless of what the zoning is. This particular one will be an 11.4 kilowatt system and will take up about 600 square feet. The site, the home, the Hildebrand's home, is right there directly in front of our LCPC vehicle, and the solar array will be right over here to the left of the vehicle, sort of tucked away in a buffered area there. You can see the sign on the property. You can see the ad in the Coastal Courier. This was all properly advertised for your consideration tonight. This is another aerial provided by Coastal Solar, just showing... Here is the... There's the house that you just saw. This is where it's gonna be. This is the driveway, so it's kind of tucked away over here out of sight. This buffer here will remain, so the solar system won't be seen from surrounding properties. And this is just kind of a sketch. These are... This solar array will have 30 of these modules, and I'm not gonna go into that description there, but there's 30 of these modules, and all added together, they produce 11.4 kilowatts of energy. The system is gonna be 50 feet long and about 12 feet in width. And another graphic of what it will look like. And this is the aerial shot, just showing where it is. I said it was in a remote area. You come off of Fort Morris Road over here and come down back in here, and this is Hager Lane over here in a very rural, isolated area. And that's just a little bit closer shot of the property here. You can see this L-shaped property. The home is located right here, and there's a... This is where the solar array will be. This is the zoning map, just showing that this property is zone A1. This is the property again, and it's zone A1. This is a narrative from Coastal Solar, just saying that they want to put in this 11.4 kilowatt there on this property at 224 Hager Lane. And this is the affidavit that the county requires that says that they will maintain the solar system in proper working order and that when it's decommissioned, they will remove the system. And the requirement is just gonna go over that with you for the conditional uses. Approval of conditional use should adversely affect the economic values in the neighborhood. We determined there will not be an adverse economic impact for the property. The next item is the physical and environmental effects of allowing the conditional use shall be considered. We haven't identified any physical or environmental detriments. The next one, buffer zones. As I pointed out to you earlier, this 15-foot vegetative buffer will be... is required and will be preserved as part of the existing vegetation. And then the next one is additional space for parking and landscaping, building zones that setback shall be considered if necessary to protect adjacent structures and lots. We haven't noted any. So, next thing is that the Board of Commissioners may approve, add, delete, or modify any recommendation by the Planning Commission. Planning Commission heard this last month at their December 21st meeting, and they recommended approval of this conditional use with standard and special conditions. And they're the standard condition. And the special condition is that the 15-foot vegetative buffer will be preserved or planted, and it is... They intend to preserve the existing buffer there. So, that's the recommendation of the Planning Commission. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have about it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Where is this at, Jeff? Go back.
Okay. Doesn't go as fast in reverse as it seems to go. So, this is Fort Morris Road is over here, so you get on this road, and Swinney Lane, I think it's what it's called, get on there, and then you turn onto Hager Lane. It's pretty far out in the country, but it's in the vicinity of Sunbury and Trade Hill area.
Okay. No opposition to anything?
No, sir. We... The Planning Commission had a public hearing on this on the 21st, and there was no one to speak against it.
Okay.
I had one question about that, and I know we had some discussion when we first started these, but you say it's supposed to be 11 KV?
That's what the Coastal Solar said in their narrative. It's 11.4 KV.
Well, and it'll stay as a residential area.
That's right.
But what prevents an individual from putting one in there that's 35 KV or 50 KV to where... I mean, at what point do you change the zoning on it?
They're all conditional use. So, no matter what zoning you have, they all have to come before this board to be approved. So, if you had concerns about one being too big, being more of a commercial nature, then that would be the appropriate time to consider that. But they are required to be buffered from the surrounding areas. So, these little individual homeowner systems, as long as they have the vegetative buffer, they all have been routinely approved in those. But if it was something really big that took 100 acres, then you probably would want to have additional measures and maybe additional... Different kind of zoning for that.
But if it's 100 acres, you would change that and zone that as commercial?
I think you could probably put that in the ag area, but it would still have to be a conditional use. You'd have to buffer it from the surrounding areas. I'll give you an example. There's an existing one that Duke Energy has over in Riceboro. That property was owned, I think it was owned by the Martin family. It's about 30-something acres, and it's zone ag, and they just made sure they had the proper buffers around it, and they approved it as a conditional use in that ag area. Because sometimes it wouldn't be appropriate... I mean, there might be an area that would be suitable for one of these systems, but it wouldn't be appropriate to zone an area industrial or commercial out in the middle of a wooded timber track.
Witted area. All right.
I was just thinking that if it was larger than that, then that individual would have enough for his house, and then he may be putting one up big enough to serve other houses. And that's my only question, you know? At what point does it become residential, and what point does it become commercial? So, but that's all right. I mean, it'll come before us, so that'll be fine. Or it'll come before somebody.
It'll come before the Board of Commissioners and the county.
Any other questions for Mrs. Rickerson?
No.
All right. Chairman, the motion.
Yeah, I make a motion that we follow the recommendation of LCPC.
Second?
Second.
Motion in second. We approve the recommendation coming from LCPC on this solar project. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, let me know by show of hands. Any opposed? All right. Approve, sir.
What did I do there, Michael? I got out of the presentation somehow.
Okay. This is the actual...
No, that's good. That's it. That's right there. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, this is a rezoning request. It has been advertised for a public hearing. Planning Commission held a public hearing on December the 21st, but it's also been advertised for a public hearing for the meeting as well. This is a rezoning request that was submitted by Mr. Joseph Bratton III. He's the owner of the property on Bill Carter Road.
Just a motion to go to a public hearing. Is that a motion?
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor? All right.
Okay. Thank you. As I said, this is a request by Mr. Joseph Bratton III to rezone some property that he owns at Bill Carter Road from AR1, agriculture residential, to B2, general commercial, to operate a storage yard, a commercial storage yard. Property consists of .69 acres of land, and you can see there the parcel number. I'm gonna show you some more information on that. This is a view of the property looking from Bill Carter Road. The property kind of goes back in a rectangular fashion like this. It's kind of sandwiched between two residential properties. There's a house here, and there's a house on the other side of it. Mr. Bratton said that those houses are owned by relatives of his, and part of the reason, as you'll see as I get into the presentation, is that he wanted to park this... His equipment for this mobile business on this property so that the neighbors who are family members can keep an eye on it. And that was his justification for wanting to do that. Anyway, this is a picture of our sign in front of the property. It's been advertised, and there were a number of people who came to the Planning Commission meeting to speak on this. And then, of course, this is the ad that we ran in the Coastal Courier. Narrative, he's got... What he wants to do is park two box trucks, one duly ton truck. He wants to park two closed-end trailers. You saw some of the closed-end trailers there in the photograph, a car hauler and an RV. He wants to park all those on this property once it gets on B2. He's operated this business as a mobile mechanic there since 2018. Says there's a lot of expensive equipment inside the box trucks. Family's living on both sides of the storage of this parcel and to keep an eye on for unwanted activities. That's Mr. Bratton's narrative there. This is a picture just showing where it is. Highway 84 here, Bill Carter Road. It's just a little ways down Bill Carter Road on the right-hand side. You can see it's... There's a residential property here and a residential property here. Okay? That's just a little bit closer up. You can see the two existing houses there. This property has been cleared off since this aerial photograph was taken four or five years ago. Okay? You can see the existing zoning map in the area. That's the Bill Carter Store. That's the other property across the street that's already zoned B2. But most of the area in the immediate vicinity of this request on Bill Carter Road is AR1. It's completely surrounded by AR1 zoning. Our zoning analysis, does the property have reasonable economic value as currently zoned? We said yes. Does the proposed use conform to the J-LUS? We said yes to that as well. Number three, does the proposed use conform to the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan? And our answer to that is no. This property is designated as low-density residential, and as you saw on the map, is completely surrounded by AR1 property. Number four, will there be an adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby properties? Our answer to that was yes. Number five, is the proposed use suitable in view of nearby uses? We said... Our answer to that was no, is surrounded by houses. Number six, will the zoning create an undue burden on roads and streets and transit? We said no. Number seven, would this allow short-term gaming at the expense of our long-term planning goals? We answered that yes. Number eight, would this change cause a domino effect? We believe that it would. Number nine, are there unique historical sites that might be adversely impacted? We did not note any. Number 10, is this in a flood area? No, it's not in a flood area. Number 11, is it spot zoning and unrelated to the existing pattern of development? Our answer is that it is spot zoning. It's around... The area is surrounded by agricultural and residential uses. And then, number 12, are there unique conditions with support, approval, or denial? None. We answered. Planning Commission heard this at their December 21st meeting. There were a number of residents who came to speak in opposition to it, and Planning Commission recommends disapproval of this request. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have about it. And Chairman, I'll just remind you, this is a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is the petitioner here?
Yes, sir.
Will the petitioner please come forward and just explain in your words, sir, what your plans were for that site?
My name is Joseph Bratton. When I initially bought the land, it was me and my wife was putting our house up there. They went to adjust it to get a trailer to put there. That's why I cleared it. But when I went to get an address for the property, they told me that either I have it residential or commercial. I can't have my equipment out there. I was pushed out of Heinzville with my equipment from where I live right now, off of Airport Road. I had to find a place to put my equipment that I felt comfortable in watching, because I got a lot of expensive equipment in there. And when I came down to get an address for the property, they told me that I couldn't... Either had to be residential or commercial. That's the option they gave me. So, talking with my wife with it, and the option we had at the time is, I guess we gotta make it residential, because we got all our equipment out there already, not knowing that we had to change it like that. Because I thought it could be our resident, and we just got our equipment in the back of the house, falling back in the property. And I'm a mobile business, you know? I go... I work on semi-trucks and cars, but we go wherever they at. We dispatch when they call us, or somebody break down there. We go far as Atlanta. When they break down, we leaving. I got these two guys working for me and another guy, which is still working. He couldn't make it here today. But I'm just... It is tied my hands on where I'm gonna keep all this equipment, because I got this mobile mechanic business, and I got a lawn service. And each one of those closed trailer I got, even the box trucks, I got a lot of expensive equipment in it by itself. You know what I mean? The toolbox by itself is like seven grand, see? That's just a toolbox. And I just... When I had all my equipment on 304 North Belmont Court, the neighbors in the Cobasack were complaining about the equipment sitting out there, which is... It moves every morning. They come back late. And I just had to find a place to put it. And when I first started clearing the land, I had my trailers on the side of the road, you know, until the land got cleared out where I could take them off and put them back up in the hole. But, I mean, I had people come on the first meeting that was against it, but, I mean, they're not knowing the situation, and my hands was just tired. I just... When I came down to get an address for it, they told me I can't have commercial or residential. They told me I gotta make it either or. You know, my wife comes and wishes she had now, so I told her, let's make it residential so we could keep our equipment out there. I got an RV. I don't know... My hands tired. I'm not... I've been raised in Savannah, but I've been down here over 20 years now. And I've been running this business since 2018. And we mostly dispersed all my equipment to each person's house, but it's starting to get to be a problem. And I just had to find a way to keep all my equipment where I know it was safe and nobody won't be able to break in, steal it. But, I mean, I didn't know... People, even if I... I'm willing even to fence it off so they don't have to look at it, you know? But I'm just... My hands is tired right now. I don't know what to do.
Okay. All right, sir. Thank you, sir. Don't go far.
Mr. Chairman.
You want to ask him something?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Jeff, I think in your narrative up there, you say they've been working ever since 2018.
That was a statement that Mr. Bratton...
You've been working in that area since 2018?
No. I had never been working in that area. We were mobile, so all my equipment I had was at my house until it sent a letter of mail saying I can't have the equipment parked out there.
Okay, because, Mr. Chair, I know that this property was cleared off in June of this year.
June.
And there wasn't no activity there. Now, I'm gonna ask you a question, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna ask some questions.
Yes, sir.
Do you work on vehicles there?
If it's my own vehicle, yeah.
Okay. Do you own a log truck?
No.
Okay. But you didn't work on a log truck the other day that backed out in the road in front of me?
Well, they pulled up on me, asked me a question, but I mean, he left and went back. I know these people. Most time, these people pull up on me in these trucks, I know them, and they live around the area.
You know, the best way out, you know, is be honest about everything.
Yes. And they live in the area, you know? The log truck that you saw, he stays on Long Beach Road right there.
You know, I travel that road two and three times a day.
Yeah.
A day.
That white with that red trailer?
No.
The white?
No. No.
If you go...
I travel that road two and three times a day.
If you go down the Fourways outside, make that right, like coming back down to Waltsville, if you look to the left, you'll see that white truck and the log truck.
But what I'm getting to, Mr. Chair, and you too, that I've seen other vehicles parked there that has been worked on, like the Unit 1 Uniform Truck out of Richmond Hill.
Yeah.
You know? But I'm just saying, if you're gonna come to look for something, place just to park a vehicle, that's one thing. But if you're gonna turn a wrench there, that's something else totally different.
Yeah, that's totally different. But most time, if you see a uniform truck out, I'm buying it, because I'm gonna refer that to a mobile truck, mobile business. That box truck they selling to me, I got a contract with Unit 1, which I go in Richmond Hill on their yard and work on these vehicles. But that one you sitting there, I'm actually finna buy that vehicle, because I'm gonna refer, like I wrap my duly. I'm gonna wrap that, put my equipment in there, because I got more equipment in these closed-end trailers that can make another service truck for another guy that I need to hire.
All right, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question for Mr. Brown. That was one of my questions I had about the 2018, but you've been in business, but you actually... Have you lived out there?
No.
Okay. So, you've had the business since 2018, mobile mechanic, but you... So, you're not gonna have vehicles coming to your... You're gonna go off-site?
Yeah, we go off-site.
Okay. And... But do you live there? Are you planning on living there? You said you had went...
Yeah, but planned... Me and my wife planned a little to get a trailer put there, but the trailer was out, so we gonna get a house built.
Okay. And so, you still have the relatives on both sides?
Yeah.
And then, you're gonna go in there, and you just basically need a place to park your trucks, and then you go off-site? How many... Jeff, did you tell us how many acres was there?
0.6.
A half an acre, and you got two homes on the property already?
You got two houses. Go back to the picture, Jeff.
And there's two homes there now, and then you're gonna put in another one?
Yeah. When I put the front pad, what I got the pad at, that's when the house was built, and the equipment was going to the back.
Right.
Which I got it cleared, and that first pad, when you come in...
There's a house, and right there's a house.
Yeah.
Where?
Right there's a house, and right there's a house now.
Okay.
So, they're not on the same property that he's talking about?
No, that's a separate parcel.
Different parcel?
That's that 0.6, right little over a half acre.
There's no one living on that?
No one living on it, because it's a straight... It's a strip.
Okay.
Not a wide property.
Right. Okay. No, it got me a little confused when he said he had relatives living on...
Both sides.
I thought he meant...
Both sides.
On both sides, but not on the property?
Not on the property.
Okay. I got you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Stevens, where the area is, it's on the same side as the Bill Carter Store, right?
That's on the same side.
And where in proximity is Mr. Billy Walthaus' old service station?
Down in that corner, if you had...
Further down?
If you have a map on it, yeah.
Okay. When Mr. Billy had that, I know he had gas there one time. Was it a mechanic shop back then?
No.
It was never a maintenance shop, just a service station and like a convenience store type thing?
That was it, yeah.
Okay.
Now, you're talking about half a mile, three quarters of a mile.
About a half a mile from Mr. Bratton's place down to Mr. Walthaus', which is at the corner of Walthaus Road.
That's correct.
And I guess my other question would be, if he had an 18-wheeler, if he lived there, if he lived there, Jeff and Joey, Mr. Chairman, everyone, if he lived there and he was a long-distance trucker, and he come home on the weekend, and he parked his truck there over the weekend, would that be against zoning out in that area?
There is a restriction on the size of vehicles you can park in a residentially-zoned area in the county.
Okay. So, an 18-wheeler would be outside of that? Okay. And I'm thinking another area, going out to Midway, I think you'll be past Bill Carter Road on the left-hand side. There's a kind of a yellow sign with red writing on it.
Right.
Is that some kind of storage yard, or is it people that do irrigation and do different kind of...
That's another issue that we are working on at the same present time that is not within the regulations.
But that one is up and operating, been operating for years?
No.
The one further down?
That one just prior to Homestead Road.
No, it's past Homestead. It's between Bill Carter Road and the Funeral Home on the left-hand side going out toward Midway. I don't know who owns that property.
Oh, you're talking about the Blue House?
No, it's... I'm just saying, it's a sign there that's got some kind of... It's some kind of business there, and it look like they got equipment and everything. I saw... You know what I'm talking about, Mr. Chairman?
I've seen it.
I thought it said Fleming. No?
You're talking about the Fleming Plumbing Company?[1682.33] You're talking about the Fleming Plumbing Company?
I, I think that's what it is. I mean, they, they got, they got stuff over there, don't they, on, on that parcel? And then, and I do remember we, we, you could talk about the joint land use and, and the comprehensive plan. But a few years ago, we zoned a parcel on 196 for Rick's Tree Service, and he's, he's got a mulching site. And then I don't know what the land use was for that, but he's cutting down trees in Heinzville and hauling the logs out there and grinding them up and just taking care of business. And what, what's the, the land use for that?
That mixed use?
It's for, for both, Highway eighty-four and 196 going up that way.
It makes use.
It's mixed use, okay, okay. But I'm just saying, but he, he could not, you're saying, if he had a couple of eighteen wheelers, and he lived there, and he came home on the weekend, he would not be allowed to park there? Okay.
But this property, also in the comprehensive plan, is, is shown as agricultural to residential.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not mixed use.
So anybody that does what I just said, has got a log truck or a transfer truck, as I call it, parked in their yard would be in violation of some ordinance?
In the residential zone, you're, you're limited to...
Well, it'd have to be zoned residential if someone lives there, wouldn't it? If it was a house there, and the guy goes on the road all weekend, he come home on a Friday evening to park his truck there.
Agricultural area wouldn't, wouldn't, I don't think they fall under that same restriction, but residentially zoned areas are limited in the size of truck you can park.
And I guess with that being said, Jeff, there's, there should be no one in that, in that zoning that parks a, a truck there for Saturday, Friday night, and pull out Sunday morning, go into California. No one should be doing that in, in this county.
In a residentially zoned area, I'd have to, I'd have to look at it specifically, but I just, I do remember there is a one-time, a one-time truck that was parked.
Okay. But, you know, he, he said that he was gonna park his equipment there, but he, 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 he doesn't do any work there, he leaves it there, and his work is mobile, he goes wherever needed or wherever, wherever the call is. It's not that he's wake up in the morning and start fixing on vehicles. He, he leaves, or he goes there, because he doesn't stay there, there's no resident there, he goes there and pick up one of his trucks, and then he goes to wherever his job is. Okay.
Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, if I, I may interject. There has been work done at this site. Okay? And it's only, and it's only a zero point six acres. There's no way to pull a truck with a trailer in there unless knowing you have to back it out in the road, because there's no way to turn it around.
I, I didn't say that it wasn't...
I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just interjecting that into it.
I'll just base it on what he said, he stood there, and he said that, that that's not his work site, that his work is mobile, that, that's what he said.
Yeah.
And I'll just repeat that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, let me say something. You've got a man here and his family that's trying to make a living. I understand what Commissioner Stevens is saying, but about three doors down from you on the right-hand side of the road, there's a man that's been working on cars there for, I don't know how long. And up and down that road, there's log trucks going all over the place.
Yeah.
This board right here has supported the tractor-trailer school out at, at, off Airport Road. I mean, that was something we done, we saw a lot of military people leaving. Now, there are some good drivers that can turn that thing around on a dime.
Yep.
I don't care about that, I really don't care about anything other than, number one, that, you know, you, you've got a place, and I commend you for wanting to try to work on them. If that's all you've got right now, then I hope that everything goes well with you. But I'm not gonna sit up here and vote against a man trying to run a business to make a living when a lot of people are just sitting at the house right now drawing a little check. So I just want you to understand the way I feel about it, is, it is, but a lot of trucks go up and down that road down there, and have been ever since it's been dirt. So, you know, I, I don't know what the problem is, but if we need to change it, we can change it. Jeff, you said a one-ton truck, you know how big a one-ton truck is?
That duly he's talking about, it's just kind of...
Yeah, I know, but you said a one-ton truck. A, a one-ton truck is not that very big, so you're telling somebody that comes through there that maybe he's gonna cut the timber behind him there? You can't do that, he's gonna have to come out somewhere else, I don't know where he's gonna come out of.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I, I just have a...
Alright, Mr. Chairman, I guess I just have a couple of questions for, for Jeff. And, and again, I'm, I'm a small business owner, and I definitely understand, you know, the difficulties of, of owning a business and everything. And, and even having this conversation with, and just listening to you, sir, about the, the process of how you purchased the land and how you, you know, you were thinking about that being a residential and also a commercial. I, I, that, that kind of brought something to my attention that, that we probably need to, to let people know about the importance of zoning, and whenever they're, they're purchasing these particular pieces of land, because, I mean, everyone doesn't know, you know, the rules and the regulations of, of, you know, particular pieces of property. But also with that being said, it's, it's difficult for me to sit up here and, and forget about the citizens next to you. And then also, not just that, but even with us looking at the zoning analysis, Mr. Chairman, I mean, you know, does this proposed use conform to the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan? No, is, is the answer to that. We have plenty of those on here, is this proposed use suitable in view of nearby uses? No. One of my issues, and Jeff, I guess you could, you could answer this as well, I mean, would, would this particular, wouldn't that be spot zoning?
You look at everything around it.
Right.
Everything is, is yellow, which is AR1, it's agriculture residential, and there's a commercial down here on the end of the road.
But, but, and, and that commercial has been there since, I, I probably still have a tab there when I was a kid driving my forayler, just getting gas.
That's why you can't pay the bill.
Right, yeah, probably so, I, I give them those three dollars, it's like thirty cent a gallon then. But all of that is residential, and what's the purpose of having a comprehensive plan if we're not gonna stick to a comprehensive plan? You know, I, this is a difficult situation to be in, you know, for, for the board, for, for the owner as well, and, and also the, the citizens who live next to her or, or down the street. I mean, I, I hear the, the talk about eighteen wheelers, I get that, but I'm looking at this particular situation that's in front of us. Also, looking at the domino effect that it occur. And I mean, spot zoning, I mean, isn't the legality of that, I know we have our attorney here, but, I mean, is, is that even something that, that we could even address?
I can answer that question, go ahead. The, just want to point out one thing about the B2 zoning. The B2 zoning is your most permissible or permissive zoning district, so if Mr. Bradham decides he doesn't want to do this business anymore, or he sells it, it could be a restaurant, a store, a, it could be an auto repair. In fact, if, if you do this, the B2 zoning, that allows for auto repair, so you could do auto repair on the property and not, not remote. So you gotta consider every, consequences beyond just the current use, it could be, once you zone it B2, it can be allowed, anything that's allowed in B2 can go.
And that's when the domino effect kicks in. So, I mean, we, we could, you know, we could be, you know, houses right next to auto repair shop in the middle of, of nowhere.
Or a convenience store.
Or a convenience store.
And there's no, you're not allowed to put a restriction on B2, you couldn't say we're gonna rezone it to B2 only for parking vehicles. Once you open the, once you open the commercial zoning, it's open.
Ma'am, you are?
I'm Lakeisha Nishay Bradham, I'm Mr. Bradham's wife. I've been living on Bill Carter Road my whole life, since it's been Route Two, Box 175. I have signatures of people that live on Bill Carter Road that has no problem with my husband storing his equipment there. We are not trying to do business there. When you see a car being worked on, that is either me bringing my car up there and my husband is fixing it for me. Those particular days you all are talking about, trucks coming there, they see, oh, Joe, my husband's been working for the TA for twenty-five years. So they know him and they know his work. And when they see that truck and they see browse, oh, Joe, you working out here, can you, they'll pull in there, yes, they do. And all my husband has to do is let them know, this is just a storage unit, you need me, call my wife, she'll set up a work order for you, and we'll be out there. Those were the reasons for the days that you all are talking about when y'all seen trucks out there. My aunts, my uncles, my family stays all up and down that road. And they have no problem with my husband trying to do a business, if there was something, we had to sign something, Bradham's is staying in the family, that business is not being sold nowhere, and that land is not gonna be turned into anything else. If we have to sign something to let that be known, because you all are talking like the statement you thought brought up with the eighteen wheelers, if that was my husband's business. Right there by Billy's, there's a trailer there, he has two eighteen wheelers. He parks there, and I go up and down that road every day to go my work myself, and I see that. So it's okay for him to have his trucks there, but we're just trying to store two Penske trucks, which is our work trucks, our trailers that have our equipment for our mechanic job and our lawn service, and his duly trucks, everything else comes home. Those guys park their cars there, when they go to work, they get in the yellow trucks, they bring it back, 5:00 PM is shut down. And my husband, he works on the weekends, he parks his truck there, takes that truck to the yard at UniFirst. That UniFirst truck, we're buying that to turn it into a third work truck like my husband stated to you, so that's gonna be another business truck. There's no work going on there, the eighteen wheeler you seen there, he called my husband, he pulled up there to ask him if he can do something, and my husband said, I can come out there to you. We don't have a shop, we're not running a shop there, we're just trying to store our equipment there, because we have a lot of equipment. Yes, we were planning on getting a trailer there, but with the COVID and all the situations going down, the trailer that we want is not gonna be ready. She told us if we want to wait another two to three years, and that's why we're switching to getting a home built, and that's gonna take more time. And I feel like that is our land, we're just storing it there, the box trucks are gonna be in the back. Yes, our home is gonna be frontwards, and the box truck is still gonna be in the back, because that's still where he's gonna leave out and go to work. And I have signatures signed by people that live on Bill Carter Road, that we're not out there working. There's no loudness, you come in there in the morning, we're switching, getting the trucks ready to get on the road. And if you see both of the trucks sitting out there, they're just waiting on a roll call to come. Is that a problem with us sitting on, on our property, waiting for a call to come through for them to leave? No, and I'll tell my husband, I'll be like, I'm bringing the car up there, is doing this, checking that, yeah, that's when he's working on something. But I don't see any other problem on Liberty County or in Heinzville when people are working on their personal vehicles. So that's why I'm trying to understand, to let me know better, what is the problem, what is the issue we have, because we're not trying to turn that into no shop. Eventually, our home is gonna be there, the trailer that I wanted, being that you all know how females are, we want what we want, is not gonna be ready for another two or three years. So my husband said, okay, our plans is get a house built.
Mr. Chair? I ask a question. Jeff, what is the requirement size of a lot, of a, to have a house built on it or a mobile home put on it?
If you're in the area that doesn't have sewer, like this area...
Half an acre.
You've got to have about a half acre.
Half an acre.
There's been two trailers there.
It's just about big enough for a safety tank. I will point out, Chairman, that if you zone this property B2, you will not be allowed to have a, a building permit for a house on it. You can't live on commercial property.
That's, and, and I, I think that, that's what I was saying, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I think some, some way the communication has been broken, you know? Again, I, I understand what you all are saying, you know? And I understand what the economy and, and everything else dealing with, even building a house. So it's, it's either you, you want to build a house here, or you want to use it for your business. You know, you, you can't do both. You know, you, you can't do that in the city limits of Heinzville, unless it's a, an in-house office, and there's still stipulations with that. So I understand. But I'm also confused, did you purchase it to build a house, or did you purchase it for your business?
Oh, we purchased it to build a house.
Right.
When I came down to get an address at the zoning people, they told me I got either or.
Right. Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, you, you just, you...
Due to the equipment we got out there.
Right, 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 right.
So, you know, my wife sat down and talked about it, and we need a place to keep our equipment, so we said it's only commercial, and our plan to found another piece of property to build a house. I mean, I just, my hand's tied, I don't know what to do.
Or you, you, without a respect, you might have to find another piece to put your equipment.
Let me, let me kind of move this along if will.
Can you buy a piece behind it, further behind it, to make it wider?
Well, I got it pushed all the way back where...
No, I'm talking about, that's still counting your zero point six acres, right?
Yeah.
Okay, but what I'm saying is that's not big enough.
Yeah, but that's...
It's not big enough for what?
To, 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 like I say, to park those vehicles on any residential area, first of all. And to build a house on it later. I'm asking a question, can you buy a piece behind it, or is that the forest timber, the timber company behind it?
Yeah, the land goes all the way to the back there. The part that I got cleared off where it used to be a patch, you see that patch where the airport at? It used to be trees there, but I got all that cleared out, like a pad to put the house there. And you go back farther with the square line at, all that's cleared out to the back.
But, but what I'm saying is, the, the acreage is irrelevant, correct? Because it's, it's the zoning.
Okay, the zoning is period, what we need to go back to. Okay.
This, this is a zoning petition.
Let me do this, gentlemen. Let, let me hear, if, if you all would, don't go far. Is there someone here to speak in opposition to this request? Okay, ma'am, will you come up and state your name for the matter of record? Now I know who you are.
I was born on Bill Carter Road in a house one house away from the property that they're speaking of. When I took notice of the business going there, I kept hearing the generator going. I didn't know it was a generator at first, I inquired, what is that noise? And later on, I found out, and he said, it says, it's not a business. But there were so many trucks on the side of the road. We didn't know what was going on in the community. I'm one of the people on that road, I care about the people on the road. Some of us are easily influenced. Some of us don't want to say anything, and we agree, because we don't want to riffle the water. I'm one of those who worked. I didn't collect a check for nothing. I worked, my parents worked. The property and the community is a quiet community. We all grew up together. We loved each other, and that's where the care comes in. We've had several people who say that when the trucks were coming, that they almost had a wreck on the road because of the trucks. Well, now I don't see the trailers, but every now and then you'll see a truck. I know all of us need to make a living, but we need to come to an agreement on helping the couple to find a place for their equipment. The display is nice. We always say a picture has a thousand words, but you need to see it for yourself. Perhaps a solution can be worked out, but why have a planning and zoning committee when we don't accept their findings? I have no gripe about the people who are working and trying to make that business. I have no gripe with them, but I do not, and many of the people don't want the zone changed from agriculture residential. Some people who went, I did speak to, they were really reluctant to say that they got a letter from the planning and zoning committee, and I know they got one, because they are taxpayers. And all taxpayers in that... And all taxpayers in that vicinity and community got a letter. I would like to think, and I don't have my information, that when Billy's store was built and when it was operating, you probably didn't have a planning and zoning committee. And if you did, it wasn't functioning. Billy's place, as far as I know, does not sell gas. And I don't know if it's in operation now. But I am not the only one who object to changing the zoning in that community. Questions?
Did you say your name, Ms. Mosley?
I didn't.
I don't think you did.
I am Dorothy Mosley. I am Dorothy Dryer Mosley. And I do own the property. Two houses, one house away from the area that we are speaking of.
All right. Question for Ms. Mosley from the commissioners.
Well, I, I, I think most of my question.
All right.
For Jeff.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Mosley.
Thank you.
Mr. Rickerson, um, here's what I was thinking. Kind of like following the lead of Commissioner Frazier. And the gentleman said, and listen, uh, Mr. Bradham. A lot of stuff about zoning, we know because we're in this position. If it weren't for that, we wouldn't know either. You know, so don't feel bad that you didn't know. You know, when you, when you bought that property, it happens. But we're trying to educate citizens that when you buy property, please find out what the zoning is before you have anticipated use of it because you may be denied, you know, using it for purposes, uh, whether it be residential or commercial. Uh, this is in the middle of a residential area with you. Your wife grew up down there, so you all very well know that. But my question is with the LCPC, was there any conversation? I'm not sure if you were at that meeting about trying to find some, some, some middle ground, some kind of way to, to accommodate, uh, this request. Was it?
This is, this is a pretty hard case. I mean, you, you either have business in the, allow business into this residential area.
Or you don't.
Or you don't.
And Mr. Frazier suggested that you could find property that's already either zoned for business or has the potential to be zoned for business. But beyond that, I don't really know of any, any other compromise for this situation.
Yeah, yeah.
The concerning part, I must share, is just the, the adverse effect. You know, on, on the, the other parcels and, and you know, the property values. Uh, that, that's where, and, and like I said, this, this is a very difficult, uh, case, you know. I, I, I understand from the citizen as, as being a, a business owner. I understand the difficulties. But then also understand the difficulties from the other homeowners, you know. I, we, we allow this to be in the middle of, of a residential. Uh, I mean, I used to be a real estate appraiser. So, I mean, the, the probability of your property values going down is, is, it, it, it could happen, you know. I mean, nothing is set in stone, but just the probabilities. It's, it's just a lot of probabilities out here. I don't know if, if you all could go back and, and discuss, uh, you know, some alternative measures to, to see how, you know, you, we, we could help them in some type of way. Uh, but this is, this is difficult. And you know, I've, I'm, I'm well familiar with, with that area, you know. I, I remember when Louis Frazier was a dirt road. So I, I understand that area. But just like we said, this, this commercial at the end, that's been the only piece of commercial that's been there for, I know, forty years. I, I could vouch for, for the last forty. So, and it's, it's just in the heart of residential.
Residential.
It's, it's, I, I don't.
Yeah.
Regardless if it was a half acre or three acres, it's still just, it's just in the heart of a residential.
Yeah, I had one more suggestion or, or, you know, trying to help, help them out as far as, you know, being able to either accommodate them or not. But, um, we have like approved home-based businesses in a home or on the property because he's not going to have that much traffic going in and out. So if you built the house there and it kept it residential and then applied for, uh, in-home business. Couldn't he do that or try to help him out here?
We had a case that, that, if you recall, about a year ago, same kind of situation. That we had a home-based business, and under a home-based business, you're not allowed to have.
In and out.
Have to through a symbol there.
Symbol there.
Or store materials there or have equipment there.
Right.
And you're forced, in fact, to, they rent a residential area and.
So they had to move out.
Mm hmm. So are you, are you, are you all following the conversation?
Yeah.
All right.
Right now, where I live right now, it's probably.
On Airport Road? Yeah, yeah, because you have.
Come to the podium, please.
The only thing we're trying to do is just see if we can keep our equipment there. Let's see, is there any way we can fence it off? Because I understand the heart and what the community is saying about Bill Carter Road. If we get. If we can get it fenced off and blocked. So like if the seeing the box trucks is what's bothering them, that open land, is there any way we can get that fenced off and just keep it resident? Because we're not trying to make it a business.
Normally, that conversation that you just had would have, would have been had with people like Ms. Mosley before you all came to us and y'all would come to a conclusion. So the only thing we could do, possibly do. Is, is, is table it, have you all go discuss it.
Y'all go discuss something.
See what you can work out among yourselves and then bring it back to the, to the commissioners. Correct now with, uh, kind of like, uh, Commissioner Frazier was saying, LCPC has disapproved that we don't, that we don't bless everything that's into us. Hear me very well, very well. But this is a.
It's a rock.
We, we, we're trying to accommodate you, your business interests, as well as people like Ms. Mosley in that neighborhood. We don't want to adverse, inadvertently affect them as well as some of your relatives, from what I heard you say. And Ms. Mosley is right, some people don't want to get involved, don't want to get involved, you know, I want to get involved.
Yeah, I understand that.
I don't want to get involved. We, we're trying to.
Mr. Chair.
We're kind of on a. That's, that's where we are now. But if you all, um, let me just ask Ms. Mosley real quick, Ms. Mosley, will you come back? If. I'm not sure who the neigh, who the neighborhood chairperson is, but, 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 uh.
You're not organized.
Yeah, but, but, uh, I guess my question is, is there some willingness to, to maybe work with them to see if there's something that can be done where it's uh, something that everybody can live with or is answer just no, we don't want a, a, um, a business in the residential neighborhood? And that may be an unfair question to you, but you hear, ma'am.
Yeah, it is an unfair question to me.
Yeah. And you can just say so.
One thing we need to say the truth in what's going on.
Mm hmm.
I don't know if we've had everything said.
I hear you.
That is really going on there. All I can see is that I'm passing and when I'm over at my property. And when I'm at the property. I see activities going on. But yes, I guess the community can get together and and do that. But why have a planning and zoning committee?
I hear you. Uh, just so you know, this, this government has the authority to override the planning and zoning committee. That's our authority.
Why have you?
Then, then it goes to wherever else it would go up there. But we have the right at any time to, to override the, um, that's just, that's just come with the, our charter.
Mr. Chair. I think we have beat this horse enough. I think we should actually go back and try to table it for thirty days to see if there's an option.
You sent a motion?
To, wait a minute, to try and finish and try to help him. And I think now, Mr. Br- Bradham, I think you probably got a little bit more knowledgeable of what's going on now than what you had before. And, um, we're not trying to keep you out of business. It's just the way it's located at. And once we start that domino effect, and I do agree, there's some other yard business going on, but we need to put, other than that, we're going to have yard business, yard business, yard business. So that's why we are going through this process with you now. I want you, everyone out there to understand, we're not against you. We're just trying to do the right thing.
But let me follow.
And may I, and Ms., Ms. Bradham. Is it any way possible I can have a copy of your petition? Mr. Chairman, if you allow me to have that.
Um, I will say this, um, now. I hadn't been down there. But we're going to take your word to this commission that you have not been working on vehicles. Okay.
Okay.
Your, your personal, all right.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we table it for thirty days and can bring it back.
Thank you. Chair, I have a motion in a second that we table this. Know there's going to be some discussion. Ms. Mosley, will you please stand in the gap for your neighborhood, if you will?
There's others, but I think one of them could not make it tonight because of his mother.
Ms. Mosley, hear me very well. I'm not trying to get you to change your mind. I just want to give the option because I think each of us would, would like to see the young man business, uh, prosper and be successful. But at the same time, my brother, we got to take care of the neighbors in the neighborhood too. And, and young lady, those are your relatives, you said, you know.
You want to be invited to the family reunion?
We got to take care of them too.
Definitely, all right.
Sometimes it doesn't hurt to have a little conversation.
You want, you still want the invite.
All in favor of table it until thirty days?
Thank you.
Y'all talk, work it out.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm not in favor of tabling, so.
You're not in favor of tabling it? I'm sorry, all right. All right, motion to go back in the regular session.
Go move.
Second.
Second. All in favor, Raja? All right. All right, you may, y'all, y'all can stay, y'all can be excused, okay?
I think Mr. Mosley wants to make a copy of that.
Okay, all right, okay, all right. Uh, let me say this, Kim. And Ms. Mosley, those, Mr. Rickerson would tell you, those other alternatives can be such things as they're fenced in. There are things that can be done to perhaps make it more palatable. But listen, my brother, no guarantees. No guarantees, whatever y'all work out. But those are some options that could be on the table. Okay, all right. All right, finance.
Yes, sir. We finished the November report and we're trying our best to make sure that we get the December report so that we can come back before you at your mid-month meeting in January with the December results. But at the end of November, you had exhausted, um, about thirty-seven percent of your budgeted expenditure. So that's well within your parameters for this time of year. Uh, only achieved about twenty-one percent of your revenues so far, but that's because tax bills did not go out until December. Um, at the end of November, there was approximately three point three months worth of operational expenditures. They're not that way. And one year ago today, there was three point seven months. So we're a little bit behind. I, I'm, I'm going to say that's probably some timing. So we're probably very close to the same place we were last year. Some of the same departments are continuing to show up because of those lump sum payments that we make upfront. And those are your risk management, your general admin fees and your superior court. There's a couple of other, um, departments that are running slightly ahead of schedule. Mosquito Control, they bought a lump, they bought a bulk purchase of chemicals, so that kind of skewed them for a little bit. Then your, your debt service and your other financing uses. Debt service is, um, we are now making some of those first payments for the enterprise lease agreements. And those were not originally budgeted, so that's going to kind of skew that debt service department. And then other financial uses, that is to support the E nine one one operations, running slightly ahead of schedule there too. Um, solid waste right now, at the end of November, there's about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollar loss. We do expect that to turn around as soon as those solid waste assessments come in. And your other special revenue funds, um, your E nine one one, your victim witness, your child support and records service center, all operating within their budgeted parameters for this time of year. Sales tax. Sales tax looked great again, um, for the month of November, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars over what we expected to budget. So so far to date, we are about three point one nine million dollars ahead of schedule. And as you know, sales tax six runs through March twenty twenty-three. So a little more than a year left. And I guess that's why probably in the next couple of months, you're going to be talking about the sales tax seven referendum and things you want to get ready for that referendum.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so yeah, sales tax looks great. I will tell you that those obligations and commitments that you made last month during your December meeting are not reflected in here because this is your November report. They will be reflected in your December report. So if you look at your road money and say, well, I, what happened to my, you know, three hundred thousand or my eighty thou, whatever it is, it'll be in your next, in your December report because that is when you made your commitment.
I did see that.
Okay. If that's where you, you were wondering where it was, um, it'll be in your next month's report.
So is, Mr. Chairman, I had a question. Is that the sales tax that we seem to be doing so good on, was this like for October? The, the revenue?
This is what we received in November represents October sales. That is correct.
So we still got the November, December, Christmas rush?
Right, I, we haven't done that. We're trying to close. Actually, we won't even start closing December until next week.
Okay.
So.
Wow, it's looking very good.
It is looking good. Looking very good.
Questions for you, Mr. Brown, um, the, um. I don't want to term it. The bonus of the sales tax revenues, um, at the end of the sales tax period. All the overage is still gets prorated out according to the referendum. Everything still has a, okay.
Every month it gets credited.
Every month, I have it allocated by that same amount that the original project made up in the total. So every month when that check comes in, there's a prorate share allocated to every single project based on what that project makes up in total.
Every single project and every single municipality.
That's correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
I didn't know how much leeway we would have in.
Not as much as we'd like.
Honestly, I'd like to see that, um, Justice Center, man, that I like to see that, you know.
I agree.
Now, so, so could we, would the referendum allow us to collaborate with them in this house and say, hey, we would like to do this? And if they agree, or is that pretty much, you got to just abide by what the referendum says?
So you got to abide by what referendum says, you got to send them the money.
Yeah. Do I have to send it back?
In those. That money was specifically targeted though in their batches too.
Mm hmm. Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
But obviously, if you have projects that complete in the sales tax program and are not going to require any more money, you could take that money and move it.
Okay. Okay, okay. All right, okay, that's good to know.
Uh, after, after this sales tax, what, uh, how, how much are we still going to owe on Justice Center and City Hall?
I don't, I don't know about City Hall, but my guess is you're probably going to be somewhere between nine and ten million, I'm guessing. I, I didn't come with that, but I can certainly get that to you and email it.
Deal?
On, on the Justice, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It was a humongous project.
That was, that was well over twenty million dollars.
Yeah, but isn't this, that'd be what, the third or fourth splash? That's been on?
No.
The Justice Center?
The, the, no, this is, and, and actually, this is the first splash where we've totally identified just to pay down the debt. Because sales tax five, we were still building.
No.
We paid down a portion of the debt in five.
Or did we bait, we, we built it with four?
I forgot the years now, y'all.
Oh, yeah. I wasn't here for.
But, but I believe we paid.
That's what, that's, that's.
Yeah, and then there was going to be.
Okay.
More splashes.
Right.
Which is.
Right.
Yeah.
Sales tax four and sales tax five, I think we, there were still some property acquisition and, and, yeah, and then construction. And then we started paying off in five. Late five, and then sales tax six was strictly payoff debt, there was no construction. So, I mean, but yeah, I'll, I'll look that up on the debt schedule and I'll send it to you so that you can see it.
Sales tax six, we made a concerted effort.
Sales tax six, we made a concerted effort to address the debt.
Yes.
Because of the citizens' input.
Yes, yes.
Outcraft, I'm lacking a better word, yeah.
What year was it that we refinanced? Didn't we do?
We did that too.
We just did it last year.
Yeah.
That was last year?
Twenty-
Twenty twenty? Twenty one? I thought it was twenty-
Well, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, calendar year twenty twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty-one. I think it was maybe September of twenty twenty, September, October. September, October of twenty twenty, so, uh, yeah, I think in fiscal years.
Yes, remember that we're paying off at a faster rate than we normally, than we started at the beginning, so we-
And when we refinanced, we did save a lot of money, so that's helped. But yeah, I, I'll look, it could be as low as eight. And, and maybe, and you know, we've got one more year in six still for a payment, so by the time you make that one more lump sum payment, you might be, you know, at six or seven. I, I can't say off the top of my head, so.
Alright, I was, yeah, just looking for-
He's spending money over there.
Yeah, just, just, just looking.
Well, I know he's got his wish list on it, he's ready.
Listen, I only have one thing on my wish list. I, I, I think the cat is out the bag.
It is.
It was out the bag last time.
It's been out the bag for ten years, actually. Yeah.
He's down here on this end, he's got it back in the bag.
This, this has been a ten-year battle, man, I'm still fighting.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Kim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You gonna get it?
Mr. Long's not here.
You gonna get it? You gonna get it?
Gotta trust the process, huh?
You gonna get it?
Really?
Richie Kelly?
No, my, I was looking for Trent Long.
Oh, no, Trent is, Trent is actually gonna be on the phone with us later. His monthly report will come up in the mid-month.
Okay.
And the, uh, issue for planned acquisitions.
Okay, alright. Attorney Davis?
Evening.
Good evening, sir.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
First resolution you have before you involves your redistricting plan. And I think this has been explained to everyone in the past. Once your plan was preliminary approved, it had to be submitted to the reportionment office for a technical review. They reviewed it and returned back some corrections, which I think have been presented and explained to the board, at least to the members. Uh, and this resolution is required in order to submit the corrected plan to the local legislation delegation for enactment in the next twenty twenty-two regular session, which begins next week. And so if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but otherwise, we need this resolution approved so that your redistricting plan can be presented to the General Assembly.
Do you know what, in, in which district they were tweaked?
Primarily, it was Commissioner Stevens' district.
Okay, okay.
It, it, it involved a little over, is that correct?
Well, if it did-
There, there were two.
If it did one, I know District One, and if there was any shifting in mind, it affected District Four.
Okay. Okay, alright.
And there was two.
Two people, right? Right.
Very few people.
And it did not affect the one-person, one-vote standards and the, you know, the allocations that had been made before by the board. It was simply done to better protect voter anonymity. Sometimes when you have pockets, which when you, when you overlay, uh, voting precincts over census data, it, it might be possible to identify certain voters and their voting patterns. And so that was the reason primarily for the technical corrections made by the reaportagement office.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I heard you say something that, you said the one vote, one person, and I had an issue with that. Remember when I kept saying some of the minorities were not counted? Now, it's more, minorities is more than just blacks, it's the Hispanics. And I heard, uh, what's his name?
Jimmy.
Jimmy said at the Board of Education meeting also, that Hispanics were not counted, except for, counted properly, like they're supposed to be, except for one county, and that was Grenette County. And that's where that, like I say, that one vote, one person, one vote, and it's being counted properly, I still have an issue with it. I know it might be too late, but I still have an issue with it. Because they are not, the Hispanics is not being counted properly.
I'll be happy to look into it. I wasn't involved in the redistricting plan, but I know that the reaportment office examined the plan for purposes of, of, uh, that consistency with the one-person, one-vote standard, as well as some of these other more technical, uh, issues, such as voter anonymity. And that the only corrections that were returned were the ones that were discussed earlier with you folks regarding voter anonymity.
Right.
But, but I'll be happy to look into that further for you.
And, and like I say, I'm just gonna lay it out, just a few more things, Mr. Chairman, I just want, get it off, but- Get it off, yes.
I thought you told me you were done.
He, he got a whole book over here.
What was that?
Thought you told me you were done.
No, I was done for that day. I saw something the other day that really disturbed me from ACCG, that the reaportment section, they had people who were trained specifically to do redrawing of the lines. And it says, and I can pull it up, it says that if we had utilized them, it would not have cost local government a dime. We paid ten thou, ten thousand dollars. Ten thousand dollars, then the map still went up to reaportment to be certified. But then they had to make, it went, it should've gone to Atlanta to reaportment to be technically inspected. That's the way how it's listed. Then it should've come back if everything was okay. Then there should've been a certification form sent back. How close am I, Kelly?
Pretty close.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought. None of that-
And that's why we're back, that's why we're back here today. The statute requires that following sort of, yeah, following technical review and certification by the reportionment office, then the local Board of Commissioners approves the redistricting plan and authorizes its submission to the General Assembly.
And now it also states that if there were any changes, it could've been done by reaportment or it could've been done by the creator of the map, which would've been Jimmy McDonald. But instead, we paid him ten thousand dollars and he didn't make the changes, reaportment made the changes.
Yeah, I can't speak to that. Yet, as a general matter, though, a local jurisdiction can either draw its own, you know, fashion its own plan, or, uh, have the reaportment office prepare the plan. And the technical review, though, is performed solely by the reaportment office, whether they perform it or outside consultant does.
That's what they did.
Yes.
Right, but still, where's the certification?
Yeah, the certification for the reaportment office, once they review, uh, and, you know, make recommendations for corrections, if any, and it's adopted by the local legislation, their submission back to the local jurisdiction is, that is the certification. There is no separate certificate, but all that's required is their technical review. And so long as your plan is adopted consistent with their recommendations, that's a certified plan. And that's what the local delegation is being requested to enact at this next, uh, regular session, beginning next week.
Uh, and Mr. Chair, I, I just have a question for Mr. Davis, I guess, uh, from what Commissioner Stevens was saying. Uh, I know a couple times he said, stated that the Hispanic vote was not counted. I mean, uh,
I can show you.
I, I guess, just some clarification on, on that. I, I don't, I, what-
I don't have, but I can show it to you.
That's fine, but I, I, I do understand, um, from, from the, the legal standpoint, when, whenever a lot of the voter rights, especially in the state of Georgia, were, were formed, is we formed from a discrimination standpoint. And, uh, I guess during that time, that group of people weren't a group of people that were discriminated on. It was more of, of the African-American vote. So, I, I know that's why a lot of laws were focused on the African-American vote. Now, I, I, I just don't see how a whole group of people were not counted unless they didn't, unless they all bonded together and decided not to do the census. Because, I mean, once someone fell and did everything they were supposed to do for the census, I mean, the census is the census. So, I mean, it's not like they received those, those numbers and threw them out.
I printed it off of the map.
Yeah, alright, okay.
Yeah. I guess bottom line is, although I wasn't involved in the redistricting plan, the reaportment office has reviewed it, and they have indicated that it's consistent with all federal and state law, with the exception of the recommendation that these technical corrections be made.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
Ready for a motion.
I make a motion we approve the resolution, ratification of district maps.
Second.
Motion is second, we approve the resolution of the district maps as presented. Duly noted, Commissioner Stevens, your sentiments. All in favor, we'll raise their hands, please. All the poses, one up on the opposition.
Mr. Chairman, why, why are we talking about that? I, I have a question, uh, Joey? Uh, maybe, you know, you can answer this. I, I just, just need, um, I've had a question and, um, I, I received the answer, but I just wanna put it out there for the record. Now, uh, this year, with, with the new lines, let's say everything goes to Atlanta and everything is approved and it's ratified and, and we move forward. And there is an election this year, twenty twenty-two, um, you know, the, um, districts one, two, and three, their seat is up. And I think on the school board is the chairman, four, five, and six, I believe. So, with the new lines, and there was some movement in every district. And, um, while the, if anyone that's an incumbent or someone that's running for the first time, and they get out there and they hit the campaign trail, um, are they knocking on doors based on the new lines? Okay, so, like, for, for, for instance, a part of Homestown is, or was in my district. Now, so do I still represent part of Homestown? And while I'm representing them, would Commissioner Stevens, for example, be knocking on doors for people that I'm representing with the hope that he would represent them if he's successful in November? How, how, how does, how does that work?
You go ahead.
You wanna address the language?
Yeah, I, I mean, you can go ahead if you know, but the, then the, the local legislation that's prepared by the Legislative Council's office, it will address that. And, you know, basically, the residence requirements for incumbents won't be disturbed. But, you know, going forward, you know, lines will be implemented at the new, you know, the new, the new elections. If that makes-
Well, I, I, let, let me phrase my question. I'm, I'm trying to get an understanding. I, I was told that for the people that's running in twenty-two, they are running in the new lines. And, and that I still got the same lines until twenty-three. So, the, the person that's, that, that mayor knocks on their door is technically in my district until twenty-three?
Twenty-three.
No, so actually, I think, when, when the new person takes, when, when that other election happens.
Yeah.
The twenty-two election.
Will be the trigger.
Yes, it, it's, it's the new election cycle which is the trigger.
That starts the new-
There, there been some concern with incumbents if the redistricting lines have affected their residency requirements. Incumbents don't have to worry about that, but in connection with the next election cycle, that will be the time at which all the redistricting changes are implemented. Including, including commissioner districts that might run in twenty twenty-three. So, and, but, but I'll, I'll confirm that, Commissioner Gilliard, with the Legislative Council's office, that's my understanding.
Mine too.
There, there has to be some date in which these changes are uniformly applied.
Right, and, and that's my question, because if, if I was told that, um, that my lines, my constituents are the same until twenty-three, and there's an election in twenty-two, the people that's running in twenty-two, for they, you know, soliciting votes for them.
Yeah.
My people or their perspective.
Will they solicit votes?
For their new-
Based on the-
Does that prove the new lines?
The new lines.
Whenever they swum in, that's when it takes effect, which will be twenty-three.
But I, I'll get, uh, there's, there's sample language, it's standard language, it's inserted in all these local acts. I'll get that and send it to you so you can see for yourself, but, uh, but no, that's my understanding. And I'll clarify that following tonight's meeting.
But now, Commissioner Gill-
I hope seeing it helps me understand it better. I still don't understand it.
Commissioner Gill, Mr. Chairman, I, let me say this, if you wanna go in Homestown and knock on the doors for me.
I will.
Then I, I, I-
That's the whole reason I was asking the question.
Y'all gonna extend cards?
I mean, I'd, I'd have paved all the roads for you over there, so, you know, I may as well knock on the doors for you.
You left too.
Right now, that's still my district, so I'm, I'm getting ready to pave them.
They'd be voting for Ricky, Kelly.
There you go.
But again, tonight's resolution is the one that's required by statute for you guys to adopt before you, it's submitted to the General Assembly.
Yes, sir.
On this, on this discussion that we had here on the one vote.
One man, one vote?
I understood that, and I might've slipped the, Mr. McDonald, when Mr. Stevens said there was a block that had fifteen votes in it, fifteen residents, and there were just ten being counted. And he said, the reason was there was two Asian, two or three of, of a, a different-
Right, this would be.
Yeah, flavor, what you wanted, but what he said was, they only measure black and white like Commissioner Frazier. It's just a black and white.
Everybody else gets lumped into.
And, and, you know, I'm gonna give the devil his due or whatever, but as far as Mr. McDonald, I, I knew who he was when he got here. As well as a few times I've seen him, but, I mean, from what I'm understanding about things that's happening across the state in the General Assembly or whoever, whoever does this reaportment, they can just take a ruler and just draw them a line that'll say Commissioner Stevens has also got to run against Commissioner Jones. They'll just include two people. Somebody's gotta move.
Yeah.
The same way it is with Commissioner Frazier and Commissioner Gill. Or, or they can draw the line, and if you don't like it, you don't like it. Now, I think we did have a good mediator to kinda say, hey, you know, we wanna try to fix these things, will we get the numbers right, and somebody don't have to spend two hundred thousand dollars on a new house if they wanna move or run again? But, um, the, the part about the, you know, one person, one vote and things like that is, I read, uh, I guess you said that out to everybody, and I, I looked at it pretty close, but, um, you know, I don't know how you can determine what you want and what you don't want, so I did say-
Well, by having a meeting of three.
Huh?
Nothing.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it, it is, it's a little bit confusing.
Alright, sir.
Uh, yes, sir, as I mentioned, this is the resolution required post-technical review and certification by the reaportment office so that you, the, the redistricting plan can be submitted to the local delegation of the General Assembly for adoption at the regular session beginning next week.
Mr. Chairman, I made that motion.
I thought we already did.
We did.
And we already voted.
We voted.
I read the hotel motel tax.
Thanks. This I am familiar with.
It was five one. It was five one, wasn't it?
Five one.
I just wanna make sure we, no, it wasn't five one, was it?
Yeah.
It would've added two.
Max, Max is not here.
Right.
Max is not here.
But we're still five one.
Five to one.
Six of us here.
Okay.
Hotel motel tax. This was discussed at your last meeting. Uh, and I think Leah Poole maybe have, uh, has broached the subject board previously, but, uh, as, as all of you know, we currently impose a five percent hotel motel tax. Fairly recent amendments to the relevant statutes authorize local governments to impose up to eight percent hotel motel tax. Uh, and of course, those are used to promote, uh, local tourism. Uh, and under the new act, a portion of those funds now can now also be spent on, uh, capital projects. And I think this board has at least initially identified an event center as one of those capital projects you'd like to pursue with some of the proceeds from the, from the hotel motel tax. So, tonight's resolution is required by state statute, and much like the redistricting, before you, this tax can be imposed, it has to be submitted to the General Assembly, and a local act has to be passed sponsored by our local delegation authorizing the eight percent, uh, hotel motel tax. And I think as we discussed before, the five percent tax that you impose now, that will be spent the way it has always been spent, three percent to the, to the general funds and two percent for the promotion of tourism, which if, if you folks remember, can't be used for capital projects. It's typically those kind of promotional or advert- It's typically those kind of promotional or advertising costs incurred by the county and its contract partner, the Chamber of Commerce. But the additional 3%, half of that will be used more in the traditional promotion of tourism. But the other half will be used for those tourism development projects, the capital projects that I mentioned that you folks identify. And as Joey indicated, and it's set forth in your resolution, I guess the first of those would be a community event center that you folks have identified as being needed in the community. And so that's all the resolution authorizes. It authorizes the imposition of the 8% hotel motel tax subject to the enactment of a local act by the General Assembly approving the increase. And it provides that the tax will be effective the latter of March 1st of this year or the first Monday of the second month following approval by the legislature. So as to give local businesses and the county time to implement the change.
We're following Flemington's lead until...
Yes.
Yeah, we are.
Yes, and the lead of many other jurisdictions, including Savannah recently.
Yeah, Savannah did too.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, we're probably low levels in the county, right, Joey?
The...
Of course, these cities will wind up with the...
We get the own posts?
We get the own posts.
Yeah.
That's it?
That's it. That's it.
And the tax will apply to all parts of the county except the territory of municipalities who have adopted a hotel motel excise. So, and I think most, most all cities who have a hotel motel in them have adopted an excise tax. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. But again, this is simply required by state statutes that we can submit this to the General Assembly for enactment at its upcoming regular session.
Yeah.
Motion.
Well, you serve on that, on this?
This is not a...
Is there a board on this one? Or is this the...
Not a board on this one.
On the hotel, on this...
I'm on the CVB board, but this nothing, this is totally done by municipalities and our government, so.
Okay.
A portion of it for the, for the promotion.
Tourism.
Tourism piece.
Yes.
Rest of them go, Flemington get some. Whoever has a hotel, get some.
Right, I misspoke earlier. We don't, we don't contract with...
Right, okay, okay, that's what I'm...
We don't contract with the chamber. We contract with the convention adventure, the Desert's Bureau.
If you've got one, Mr. Chairman, back to my original question was, if you've got one in the county, unincorporated area, it would all go to this body?
A portion of it goes under that first half of the split. On this goes a portion comes to us, to the general fund operations. And then there's a percentage under law that has to go to a contract agency for tourism.
Promotion.
Promotion tourism, thank you. And that's with CVB.
Right.
Those portions that come to it, a portion goes to the...
And that is, I think, why so many jurisdictions are enacting this increase is because it does allow for the expenditure by you folks on capital projects. You know, whether it be convention centers, event centers like it's proposed or individual sites and attractions. You can actually support those sites now with these funds, both capital outlay projects and operational expenses. So it provides a lot more flexibility to local governments to promote tourism. And of course, most of these funds are generated from people who visit from out of county.
So Liberty County only has one, is it one, Joey?
One motel we get.
One motel.
We do time to time get a portion from...
Dunham Farms? Yeah.
Do we, so, did you count midway, but that's...
The city midway.
The city.
They get that, whatever they get.
With the Airbnb. The Airbnbs are required under new law to report, just like hotel motel receipts are. And we should. We don't so far.
Yep.
So the condominiums at Sunbury are not...
No.
Those are...
Unless they Airbnb.
They have listed that individual.
Airbnb and rent it out.
And we should.
I just know way more, a lot, well, I'm not saying way more people.
They love Airbnbs. All right.
We gotta ask for that.
Chair tenor motion for the resolution. Second. Motion second, we approve the resolution for the hotel motel tax increase. Look forward to some good things coming of that so we can hopefully get this event center one day. All in favor, let them raise your hand, please. Show your hands, all opposed. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, folks.
ACCG defined contribution plan.
That confusing document. Just email it to me. And then I'll call you to explain it to you.
Okay.
Chairman, in the letter that you just...
Was in your, was in your package. This came from ACCG. As you know, we are under their 401A defined contribution plan. And from time to time, the IRS requires updates to that plan by plan holders, for which ACCG is one. And since we're a member partner, we're required to adopt their restated plan. There are no changes to the plan document itself. It's just required from time to time to be restated for IRS purposes or refilled. So ACCG has sent this and is asking the counties that do participate in their plan as a matter of law to just adopt it based on their readoption, so to speak.
Chair tenor motion.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
First, second, we approve the resident to adopt the amended and restated ACCG defined contribution plan. Any further discussion? All in favor, we'll show our hands. Any opposed? Thank you, sir. Midcoast Region Airport.
Some more good news here. This is a resolution to accept another allocation from GDOT through the airports program to reimburse expenses associated with airport operations. This is coming out of the state ARPA funds that were delivered in 2021. It does not require a match. You may remember, we had an allocation last year. So this resolution would need to just be a contract with GDOT to accept $32,000.
Y'all want to accept some money?
Yes, sir.
Chair tenor motion. A second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? I'm just trying to remember the last allocation. Was it around the same amount of money?
It was exactly the same, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. GDOT Lewis Fraser Bridge Project.
Well, if the board's pleasure, we'll give a little back. This is on the Lewis Fraser Bridge Replacement Project. I think I included all the documentation for you there, sorry to overburden you. But basically, there is a county match or a match is required on bridge projects. The bridge projects, and you see this towards the end of your memo from GDOT, is rated in a tier. Bridge projects are rated tier one, tier two, tier three as far as contributions that GDOT requires. It's estimated that our contribution needs to be $75,000 for the project. It involves a right of way that'll be needed to do a bypass for the bridge. And that is what I need from the board. Those funds, we do have funds allocated in the drainage section to do this along with the bridge project, so there is money available to do it. The other, all the other costs of the bridge involving utility location and total construction will be at the expense of the state and GDOT.
Can we pay it at the end to make sure we like the way it's wrapped?
You know, Commissioner Walden, they didn't put when it was due. I'll try to hold it, as you know, as long as I can. So we can try it out.
Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir.
I hear you say something about a bypass?
What they're, what they're thinking they're gonna have to do is build a, is build a temporary bridge.
Because the first time when this came up, I asked what was going to happen. And I think it was given to us that there would be, the road would just be shut down and everybody would have to go around. Am I correct? Anybody, y'all remember that?
I don't remember.
Yes, sir, you did. And I'll confirm, Commissioner Stevens, what GDOT's intention is. Under a tier two project, it involves a likely on-site detour or a large construction footprint. And it could be that they're planning to build, expand the bridge so much to create a single lane instead of doing a bypass. But I'll confirm that with them.
I mean, because why couldn't it be done just like the one on 119? You know? They shut down, they built the bridge, the new bridge, and the new route. And when they got the new bridge, they shut down the old route.
I think that was a wider right of way.
Wider right of way? Okay.
Yeah. I know that when you're going down the road, it swings out.
We got a meeting over there this week, as a matter of fact. I'll put that on my list.
One other question I know, Mr. Chairman, please forgive me for this. But we're talking about bridges. And I know sometime soon, the overpass at Retreat Road in 95, which is going to be, what, a DOT project?
Yes, sir.
What will we have to do as county for the passage back and forth for those people who live over there? And that's something to be thinking about. Because there's no other way to get those people out when they start working on that bridge.
Yes, sir. I'll talk, we'll talk with the district engineer about that. I'm sure they've thought about, I'm sure it's a standard kind of procedure. But I'll get that definite answer for you too. So we just need a motion and a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The project, sure.
Second? Second, all in favor? Raise your hand. I think we had the discussion. I know, Commissioner, you had an announcement by the VA.
Oh.
Then I'll come to Mr. Brown.
I think I mentioned it to Mr. Brown also. There's a push on for the VA clinic that's located in Hinesville. If this board could do a resolution and give it to Representative Williams to have the VA clinic in Hinesville named after two Liberty County vets. And these, from what I can gather, these are the only two names that is up on the memorial wall as right now. Now, understand me, there are others who lost their life in them. But these two names are the only two names that's up on the wall. Now, what is the procedure for getting names up on the wall? I don't know. But these two names are up on the wall. And we would like to try to get a resolution from the Board of Commissioners going to Representative Williams so that he can take it from there and move it on up the line to possibly get the VA clinic in Hinesville named after these two veterans who lost their lives.
From Liberty County.
From Liberty County.
All right, we'll pursue that.
Questions?
All right.
Yes, sir. You and I can get together if you just, we get the names.
Right.
And then we get that resolution put in.
I have it. I have the names. And one other thing. I've started something else in the county. We're trying to do a relief program, a disaster relief for a couple of the states that got hit real hard. We don't know which county we're gonna choose. But we're working on that. And we hope to have that up and running in a couple, at least a week or two weeks from now. So I will let everyone know by email or whatever what all we will be looking for, clothing, goods, canned goods, diapers, or whatever. But I will let everyone know. And we appreciate all of the participation that we can get into it. And once we get to a certain point, then we will load it up and take it up that way.
You're talking about from the herd, the storm that went through Kentucky, up that way?
Yeah.
Okay. Last month?
Yeah, Tennessee.
Okay, Tennessee, Kentucky?
Yeah.
All right, sir. We support you on that.
Yeah.
But by the grace of God. Mr. Brown, your announcements. You have to think about it.
I'm gonna let Mr. Mosley, he had a call from our backup. We've got two amendments we've had on order for some time. Struggling there to get chassis. One of them was supposed to be delivered actually before last year ended. Then it was January and has been kicked to March. We had another one that was on order that now has been pulled from the order banks because basically Dodge has just pulled those. So Custom Body Works has contacted him about an availability of some units that may be coming in or should be coming in in the spring. I'll let him run with that.
Mr. Chair. Talking to Mr. Gill, he said that his alternative to kind of expedite things, because they didn't know when the Dodge Porter would open, if any, this year. He did have some Ford chassis coming in. And they would be here somewhere around the July, August timeframe. And why it's that's important, because the quicker we can get the chassis and the quicker they can finish building the amelances. And while we have been going with the Dodge model right now, you know, talking to Crystal, she stressed the importance of them having some units onboard. Right now, she shared with Mr. Brown and I that their backup units are out. So they are, they're struggling.
Struggling.
But they're trying to make, do what the best they can. As Mr. Brown stated, the two units were scheduled to be here this week. But they, when I talked to Jimmy the other week, he said that Mr. Mosley COVIDed and global supply has backed me up. And we're hoping to have those in March. But he said, I can, what I can do is recommend, I have these Ford chassis and I can make them available for you. He said, because those are cost to us, we would need you to pay a little more for them. And the amount we quoted for the Dodge was 41 and some change. And it would be a $7,596 increase. But the panel, the back part of the truck, he said, we would give it to you at cost because that's what I was quoted.
Will the back, will the back, will the box on the back be the same as what's on the Dodge now?
That's what he indicated. Yes, sir.
I mean, I know we did run Ford for a long time. We had less problems out of the Dodge. And I understand her needs to get something on the road. But I just hope that, you know, if we really go with the Ford, that we don't have the same problems that we had earlier.
I concur. And I tell you, if you remember, without getting too much detail, probably the Fords were due to the diesel engine in there. Mr. F probably echoed some of this. But the old model diesel that was in those Fords, those have been changed out now. So they're running a different diesel type. They don't seem, a lot of units are, and I'm not saying we get away from Dodges.
Right.
But I think it'll be fine, Commissioner Stevens, especially in this chance. I will tell you, I think this is the only breath we have of trying to get a chassis.
On a chance.
Anytime soon.
Okay. And what's the turnaround period on this one?
She said on, Jimmy said that this one will be available in August, July, August, and probably another five, six months to...
And how many we have on the road right now?
Five.
We got five?
Yes, sir. Four and one that we use in town. We got one just in the shop, one that's actually waiting insurance adjustment that was hit by a car. And the other one that's waiting to park. Trying to get a park, so there's two down right now.
If I had to ride in one, I really didn't care.
That's true.
Yeah, but you want one that's gonna make it to the other place.
I'm never rode in that.
The voice of wisdom over there.
I understand what you say, Commissioner Walden. But you want one that's gonna make it from point A to point B.
All right.
I got one that'll make it from point A to point B.
That maroon colored one out there?
I'd make a motion we go.
I second the motion.
All right, all in favor? Even those, that's still August, you say?
The chassis coming in and then...
Yeah, wow.
Then you go for the box.
She's gonna be able to limp along until...
We hope.
That's all she can do.
You won't see it until fall, probably, if Ford delivers on time. And again, Dodge is not even allowing orders into the order bank.
Wow.
There's no other options. Chevy doesn't have an option.
Wow.
Look here.
What it is? Anything else, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Chair tenor motion to go out of record session to executive session for land acquisition.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, we'll let, you know, raise your hands. We cannot go into executive session to discuss land acquisition without turning.
What's Joey?
Hey, Joe. I never knew where Mr. Mosley went. Where does Mr. Mosley disappear when we go back?
Sorry?
Oh, you dropped this.
All right. Chair motion to come on executive session.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor? Nothing to report. Chair attends the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor? We are adjourned.
About the MLK for real.
I mean, you know what? I meant to have...